Ready? Okay, very good. Ready to go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. It is 7:03 PM. And before I call the meeting to order, I want to let folks know and reinforce the information from Director Bennerott that we are doing these meetings in a hybrid sort of way. We've been doing it all the time during COVID and have continued to do that so that people can participate either here in council chambers or from home. And so if you're watching the meeting on cable TV or edinamn.gov live meetings or on facebook.com/edinamn, you can participate both in community comments this evening and in the public hearing matter, the sole public hearing matter that we have. And there's a number you can call in that's on the screen and then put in that conference ID number, and then that will bring you to an operator. The operator will get some information from you and then bring you into Director Bennerott. Director Bennerott will bring you to the to the city council to give us your thoughts. Now, if you're calling in with regard to community comment, which is first up on the agenda and will come up fairly quickly, remember that you cannot speak about a matter that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for future public hearing. Other than that, we'll be glad to entertain your concerns and your thoughts. And our practice is to gather the information, and we'll come back with responses in a couple of weeks to questions that are raised or comments that are made. So having provided that information, let me call the meeting to order and ask our clerk, Sharon Ellison, to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening that's been published to the general public. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
A second.
Member Agnew seconds. The adoption of the meeting agenda is published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now we are at community comment. So, folks, again, a reminder, if you're calling in, and for those in the audience as well, I wish to address the council, you can speak to us about anything except something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Those will be topics that we cannot cover in community comments. So is there anyone in the audience, first of all, who wishes to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern to them? Good evening.
Good evening.
Wilson, good to see you. Yeah, go to the side podium there, Wilson. Sorry, I missed you coming in.
Well, I said hi to you, but you turned around and you never said hi to me.
No, I just didn't even notice.
I can go ahead.
Go ahead. What, they'll turn green once you say your name.
Hi, everyone. My name is Wilson Edwards. I'm here. I just came from a Burnsville meeting. It was super jam over there. I said, well, I gotta go to an Edina meeting, but anyway, I won't take that long. I'm here to represent the youth of the state of Minnesota, the NFL, and the Viking. I brought some flyer here. The thing about this event that we're hosting on July 8th at Jefferson High School, it's NFL Combine. They've never done this before in the state of Minnesota. So the Viking coaches and their mascot, high school coaches, they're gonna be there. And if you want to bring your child. And the other good news for youth event this year, we're partner with Minnesota Youth Rugby. A lot of women, I mean, a lot of young girls and young boys during this event. Not only that, they got voted to the Olympic Games. So if you have a dream come true, come and try out the NFL Combine. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of former Viking, and they advantage free for all kids and for parents. They don't have to pay anything, just come and watch, and they'll probably get a souvenir, all kinds of gift from the Viking and NFL. So, thank you. And also, I said my information, I think some of the council have the copy. I'll leave some copy here for anybody who wanna contact me in July 8th if you wanna bring your kids over there and enjoy the event. And thank you, and I'll give you a call, Jim.
All right.
Jim was the first mayor in the state of Minnesota we awarded Mayor of the Year, and I think 17 mayors I worked with him. But I left seven years ago for the youth of the state of Minnesota and also with the Viking and NFL. My wife said, no more sports. So, anyway, this year on December, the NFL represented at a Christmas party, they told me, Wilson, can we do something special for the kids? I went to work for five months now, 95% of the work is almost done. But thank you, and good luck on your meeting.
Wilson, before you depart, would you give us your address for the record, please?
Oh, yeah. My address is 10030 Brookside Avenue, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55431.
And before you go sit down, I just want to tell everybody in the audience here and that might be listening how dedicated you've been to the youth of Minnesota on this youth football over the years, taking time out from your job. I know how hard you work, and I know how much this whole youth football experience means to you, and you've been just an unbelievable volunteer, and people ought to be really proud that you live in Minnesota and stayed here after your football career and have been helping these kids all these years. It's really commendable. So thanks, thanks for doing that. In fact, I'd like to give you a round of applause. Thanks, Wilson. Okay, we'll talk soon. Anyone else in the audience? Let's turn then to, yeah, thanks, Carrie. Let's turn then to the virtual world and see if there's anybody that's tuned into the meeting that wants to participate in community comment.
I do have a caller.
All right.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
David Frankel, 4510 Lightview Drive, Edina. I have some questions regarding potential safety issues at the Macy's Furniture Site when and if construction starts. As you should be well aware, the city of Edina has a 20-foot easement on that property, and there's a permanent irrevocable limited use permit from the city of Edina for the Three Rivers Park District that is for the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail. My concern is there's not been a lot of transparency about all the legal issues around that site, specifically the easement, 20-foot easement. Evidently, that property's been surveyed, but they didn't survey the easement, so it's hard to tell exactly where that easement is, other than the south end of the property. The Three Rivers Park District, as part of that irrevocable limited use permit, requires 16 feet for their bike path and 3 feet for a buffer zone, they call it. The concern there is safety, but also the four extra feet, if those were given to the developer as part of that easement, there's mature trees on the north side of the trail, and from my rough measurements, if that four feet is given to the developer, those trees will probably come down. And I'd like to see those trees be saved, especially since they're part of the city of Edina easement. If you're familiar with the Southwest Light Rail Transit Corridor, there is either a fence or a cement separator between construction and the Midtown Greenway. And I'd like to see something potentially similar if construction starts at the Macy's Furniture Site to separate the trail from any potential construction. Under this, the agreement with Three Rivers Park District, the only motorized vehicles allowed on that trail are for maintenance, snow removal, and possibly law enforcement. This means no construction equipment, no construction materials allowed on that trail. And that's why I'd like to see a physical barrier to keep any casual use of that trail, not just to a minimum, but not at all. It's, the trail heavily used, and we'd like to see a safety barrier there along the trail. The other issue that has to be addressed is when there's construction at Fred Richards, how that Nine Mile Creek Trail will be protected, and if it's gonna be torn out, what's gonna be the alternative path to get through the park? In closing, my concern is safety on that Nine Mile Creek Trail through the south end of the Macy's Furniture Site. I'd like to see the south end surveyed so we can see exactly where that trail lies within the city easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel.
I have no other callers.
All right, very good. Let's move on then from community comment, unless there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward. See, no one coming forward. Let's go to the city manager for a response to community comments that were made in the prior meeting. Manager Neal.
We did not have any community comments offered at our May 2nd meeting.
All right, very good. Thank you. On then to the consent agenda, and there are several items on the consent agenda. Councilmember Rissler wishes to remove items 6E and H for some further discussion. Does any other council member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6E and H?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. The motion is stated. All those in favor of adopting the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6E and H, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now we will move to 6E, which is a proposed ordinance 202307, amending Chapter 30 of the Edina City Code concerning vegetation, Article III subset dealing with landscaping. And I'm gonna turn now to Member Rissler so she can articulate her concerns, which were shared with council members through Manager Neal this afternoon. Member Rissler.
Yes, and I would also like to thank Director Milner for getting back to me on the questions that I had. One thing that I am concerned about, and I understand that with this ordinance revision, we are not looking specifically at the rules that we have for fences. However, I am concerned that what this is stipulating is that people who would like to have zero setback need to build an opaque fence, and I understand the reason for that is so that vegetation does not go onto the neighbor's property. However, there are so many other considerations to think about, especially since this has to do with sustainability, and I'm not asking that we derail this. However, I am hoping that what we can do is move this discussion forward and perhaps cycle back to this, because access to sunlight is really important, and if you're putting up a five-foot fence that's opaque right next to your neighbor's property, that could really cause some issues right there. The other thing is that I found out that that fencing can be made with chemically treated wood, and so there's a concern there, especially, you know, since we're talking about sustainability and environmental impact and all of that, you know, now with the growing season and everybody thinking about starting their plants, and you don't want to have that treated lumber used for your planter box if you're growing food and that kind of thing. So I just feel like there could be a little bit more done on this to improve it. So there's that, and that's why I wanted to raise that.
All right, so what were you suggesting, actually? Was that we table this matter to another meeting?
I don't think we need to table it, but I would recommend that perhaps we could ask that we don't consider this a finished project, that maybe we could cycle back to it. What, I don't know what other council members think.
All right. Thanks for those comments. Manager Neal, any thoughts? Let me get to the item here.
Yes, I think what Councilmember Rissler is describing or suggesting is an additional amendment to this ordinance, to this ordinance, that we could perhaps take up at another time after we had a chance to vet some ideas from her and from other members of the council.
And it may be that this is not the place for that, that it needs to be with our ordinance language that has to do with fencing. So there's a little bit of ambiguity there that I don't totally understand.
All right, I'm with you. So we may, we'll have staff take a further look at this, and it may come back in another form relative to the fencing portion of it.
I could see neighbors agreeing to have a transparent fence because they both want to grow beans up the fence or something like that. And transparent fences, I think, for a lot of people, they may see them as being more advantageous, just especially you think about families maybe wanting to keep an eye on a kid as they go into the neighbor's yard or something like that. So the opaque fence, I feel like people should be able to have more than just that option, and we really should put some language there to talk about potential hazardous chemicals that could leach out, particularly since places that are being mentioned where the fencing could be near are wetlands, ponds, lakes, and streams.
Okay. All right, and I think the substantive part of this was that the, at least from Jessica Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, that the introduction on the matter was that the 2021 Climate Action Plan identifies implementation item GS 2-2, quote, "remove and ease lawn slash grass requirements and ordinances." Additionally, the Energy and Environment Commission has recommended, and the city council has adopted, no more May resolutions in 2022 and 2023. The EEC reviewed the proposed changes at their April meeting and were supportive. So I think that the heart of the matter deals with those particular items, but in your review, you thought that maybe the fencing element of it needed some review in the ordinance as well. So having provided that, this level of discussion, would you, Member Rissler, care to move the adoption of ordinance 202307, amending Chapter 30 of the Edina City Code concerning vegetation, Article III landscaping?
So moved.
Your second?
A second.
Thank you, Member Agnew. All right, we got a motion, second, to adopt ordinance 202307, which amends Chapter 30 of the Edina City Code concerning vegetation, Article III landscaping. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then the other matter, Member Rissler had, deals with item 6H, and that was a potential approval of a local trail connection agreement with the Three Rivers Park District. And I thought the explanation around that was well done, too, from a staff standpoint, but I'm gonna turn back now to Member Rissler for her comments. Member Rissler.
Thank you. And here, I'm borrowing a page from Member Jackson's book, in that I really want to pull this because I want to celebrate it. And I think this is such an important thing that we are doing. We are opening up the south end of Fred Richards Park. We are making it more accessible to the public. And for those of you who have been to Fred Richards, it's the north end which is accessible, and it's wonderful there, but this is a fairly big park. We just passed that sales tax referendum, so a lot of public support and participation in terms of really developing this area, but it is surrounded by a lot of private property. And so the idea of making this trail and having it come up from the south so that people, the public, can go up the bike trail, and I understand there will be an easement that will be approved, so the public can have access to that. And then this specific item is creating a segment so that it will be joined to the actual trail that is already there. So yay, go, fantastic, and so that's the only reason why I had to pull.
And I think to the point you just made, that one of the questions you asked staff was, how do we get this connection across private property? And that's in the form of that, that general public would have access to the bike path on private property because of the easement, and the developer will be paying for that public trail easement prior to the issuance of their certificate of occupancy. So those are all good questions. Thank you for that. Do you care to move this matter as well?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Member Rissler, second by Member Pierce, to adopt an approved local trail connection agreement with Three Rivers Park District as described. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, now we're gonna move on to special recognitions and presentations, and we've got several this evening to take up. And the first matter we have deals with proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, and I'm gonna read that proclamation, and that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency room nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the city council, the city of Edina, does hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27th, 2023, as EMS Week in the city of Edina, with the EMS strong theme, EMS Week, where emergency care begins, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, is our motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
A second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to adopt the proclamation designating May 21 through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Edina. All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have our chief with us, Chief Andrew Slama, and here to accept the proclamation and talk a little bit about the week and the people that work for our city that engage in lifesaving efforts every day. Chief, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I just want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for your support for our entire EMS service. This is really a chain of survival that we have that starts with our dispatch center that sits right here in City Hall. Our police department and fire department responding in first response and having ALS ambulances and paramedic services here in the city is a great benefit to our residents. So thank you for recognizing this week and every week that we care for our residents here in Edina. We have a special guest tonight, one of our residents, Marty Burley. I'm gonna invite up here. He's a cardiac arrest survivor that received these services, and I thought he might be a good person to talk to you tonight about what services he received.
Bottom line...
Mr. Burley, please introduce yourself.
I'm Marty Burley, lifelong Edina resident. Bottom line, those guys saved my life, because I lost, passed out, stopped breathing, at interlocking court down the street. I was outside, nobody knows how long I was there. So they got there and saved me, and I actually have video highlights of it, not very good. But this is my second time. You know, a lot of times you read about people that have heart attacks and aren't saved, and there's a lot of high school friends that I went to that they pop up every once in a while, and I'm so grateful and thankful for the emergency services that Edina has and throughout Minnesota, because I've been twice blessed. The other time was 10 years ago. I do have a special gift in my chest now, and I always joke around with these guys and everybody else, that they didn't put ESPN or HBO in there, so it's just a defibrillator with a pacemaker, but I'm doing very well. I'm gonna become their new best friend, because you're close by, and I'm just grateful that you guys recognize them, and especially the guy that broke my ribs, as you hear. The total eight, which, you know, least concerned...
In the scheme of things, that wasn't a big deal.
To me, it was like I got my heart going, everything else heart-wise, and my biggest problem was my ribs for about eight weeks. Couldn't sleep. But I won't hold it against you. But thank you for your time. Thank you. God bless everybody here, and thanks for your time.
Mr. Burley, thanks for coming in this evening. We get notes on a regular basis about the quality of service rendered by our emergency medical services personnel, but to have somebody take their time and come in live to tell our whole community how appreciative you are for them saving your life...
I appreciate you saying "coming in live," because I, the other one, I don't think they want to drag me around.
Mayor Hovland, can I suggest we have a photo of Mr. Burley with all of the public safety staff and attendants?
Yeah, and I've got the proclamation while they come on.
Unless you got like a sketch artist or something.
Okay, everybody gets, here comes the, here comes the...
I'm gonna come join in because we're so proud of you.
I like it.
So, we heard what you did. I'm gonna go to the last stage.
Oh, I thought you were, you want to go up too?
I'm just gonna walk.
Who should make smile?
He is smiling. His whole chest is smiling.
There we go. I love it, thank you.
But first of all, we're gonna take up the matter of the designation of May 2023 as Preservation Month, and that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. Whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Preservation Month 2023 is sponsored by the Edina Heritage Preservation Commission. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Edina, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Preservation Month in the city of Edina, and call upon the people of Edina to join their fellow citizens in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Is there a motion to adopt Preservation Month proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Member Rissler moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of Preservation Month in May 2023 by proclamation. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And I'm gonna hand this to Ms. Bodicker, and then I'm gonna have her make a few comments, and then we're gonna be on to the next matter, which is, you're advised to be in trouble.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'd also like to take time tonight to recognize the city's long-term or longtime preservation consultant, Robert Vogel. The city of Edina and the Heritage Preservation Commission would like to recognize and thank long-term or longtime preservation consultant, Robert Vogel, for his service. Robert began work, his work for the city in the late 90s and began work... his work for the city in the late 90s and began working for the city as the city's preservation consultant in 2002. Robert has been a big part of the Edina Heritage Preservation Commission and an integral part of historic preservation in the City of Edina. Myself and the Edina Heritage Preservation Commission would like to recognize Robert during Preservation Month and thank him for all of his years of service in working for the city. With that, I'd like to say thank you, Robert. If you'd like to come up, we have...
All right, yeah. Congratulations, Robert.
Would you like to say anything? You don't have to.
Well, then I won't.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Robert. You want to take a picture of the mayor?
Sure.
Awesome.
Jennifer, we have one more addition.
Oh, you have a present, too. I love that. Robert, we're smiling big. Big smiles. Couple more, couple more. Thank you.
And we'd love a couple of comments regarding your work over the years.
That's true. Oscar does a good for you, I assume.
Well, it looks interesting. One of the downsides of being a consultant is that you really can't tell the clients how much you enjoy working for them. Because if you tell them that too often, they just get less inclined to adjust your salary or your fees. But this was a great job for a preservation professional. I stumbled into it. I was the city historic preservation officer in Cottage Grove. And Bob Coteen, who some of you must know, was the parks director here. And somehow, we had gotten connected with each other through the Metropolitan Council. And he heard that I had been 20 years with Cottage Grove and that it was time for a change. And the next thing I knew, all of a sudden, it was, well, can you come and do that here? And it worked out very well. I remember telling my wife that I'd just keep doing it until I didn't want to do it anymore. And then after about 15 years, she said, you're not going to get tired of it. So she made me commit. I turned 70 last December, and she said, well, that's when you have to start dialing this stuff back. It helps that you're 155 miles from my office, so I have a good excuse to not want to keep doing this. But if you ever asked me to come back, I'd probably say yes. This was a great position, highly supportive elective officials through the, really, the whole 20 years, highly professionalized and enthusiastic staff support, and one of the more eclectic groups of citizen volunteers, the old Heritage Preservation Board, now the Preservation Commission, spend my pleasure to work with. So you should be very proud of what they've accomplished. And the city's been doing this for almost a half a century now. So it'd be interesting to see what the page turns to. So thank you, all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. All right, Emily, did you want to introduce the next topic, or do you want me to just bring Tommy up?
Introduce Tommy.
All right, we've got our vice chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission with us, Tommy Everson, who's going to help make a presentation with regard to the Edina Heritage Award that this year is going to St. Peter's Church in Edina. And we're looking forward to giving this award out in just a few moments, but we're going to have a presentation first.
Sure. Well, this is a real treat.
Vice Chair Everson, welcome.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. This is a real treat for me. I grew up in the Morningside neighborhood, went to Edina schools up until high school. And then after I got in the professional world, I moved to the Highlands neighborhood and been there with my family for about eight years now. I'm a residential architect by trade. So joining the HPC, I think it's four years ago now, was a natural fit for me. And it's been a very eye-opening experience. It's been nice to kind of see behind the curtain a little bit with the city and the inner workings, and also get to work with fellow members of the community that have the same passions that I do. This year, you know, we opened the floor to nominations for local buildings and for the annual Preservation Award. And this one stuck out to me. You know, being a residential architect and somewhat of a mid-century modern enthusiast, Ralph Rapsin is a big name to me. He's known nationally, if not internationally, for his talents. And there's one building that I'm aware of that he designed in Edina that's still standing, and that's the St. Peter's Lutheran Church. And it's a building that I've, you know, walked, biked, driven by countless numbers of times in my life, you know, in my experiences in Edina. And I didn't give a whole lot of thought to it until I started getting into the architectural field. And when we had the chance to nominate the buildings, it popped in my mind with its significance. And I reached out to the head pastor there, Mark Shockey, who's joining us tonight. And he was kind enough to give me a tour, bring me through the building, and give me some historical background on it. And I came back for a follow-up meeting later on with another Edina resident who's an architectural historian and author, Jane Hessian. And we were able to interview, you know, a longtime member of the church. I think he's in his 90s. And he gave us some background into the projects that have gone on to, you know, renovate and preserve the building over the last several decades. But I'm going to read quickly here just the write-up we had for the submission. Just give you a little background on the church. So St. Peter's Lutheran Church, circa 1957, is the first church designed in Minnesota by internationally renowned architect Ralph Rapsin. It's the only one he designed for the City of Edina and one of only a handful in the state. The structure has undergone several additions and renovations over the decades, but still maintains its integrity and serves in the same capacity for which it was originally intended. Initially, Pastor Harold Schweigert hired Rapsin to expand a small existing church, but opted instead to demolish the original building and design a new one. The unique church-in-the-round plan evolved for two reasons. Site limitations did not permit a traditional long rectangular nave, and circular sanctuary with wraparound seating suited the congregation's liturgical philosophy of the family of man gathered around the Lord's table. The church's star-shaped roof, which is composed of eight steeply pitched glass-filled gables, is its most distinctive and recognizable feature. It represents a crown, the Church of Christ, King of Kings, and Lord of Lords. The altar stands directly below the center of the star. For its singular design and enduring significance, the building received an AIA Minnesota Honor Award in 1958 and an AIA Minnesota 25-year award in 1983. Rapsin, an influential architect and educator, received the commission in 1954, the year he moved to Minneapolis to head the School of Architecture at the University of Minnesota, a position he held for 30 years. Prior to his arrival in the state, Rapsin taught architecture at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology and designed American Embassy buildings in Europe for the U.S. State Department. Highlights of his long prolific career include the original Tyrone Guthrie Theater and Cedar Riverside New Town in Town in Minneapolis. And with that...
I've got the award.
I have it planned.
Okay, you have it planned? Great.
Yep.
So congratulations. That's sort of a beautiful point.
All right. Just a tiny, tiny...
Jane, you want to go up too?
Just a couple more. It's a big deal. Thank you. Congratulations.
A lot of you probably don't know that Pastor Shockey is also a NASCAR chaplain. Maybe the NASCAR chaplain. I haven't heard of either. There's several of them. All right. So you want to say a few words?
A few years ago, we started some discussion about our facility and how to utilize our facility. And one of the things that we realized is the appreciation of the community for the heritage of some of the buildings. And this came along as a possibility to recognize that. Our work, you know, all the way back in the 50s, included working with the University of Minnesota to develop the church as it was. So it was really intended to be part of the community, part of the state. And it is still a very visible reminder that our community and the families that gather there are so important. So thank you for this honor. And it's a great recognition of all that churches have continued to do through Edina's history to better the community in different ways. And architecturally, it's great to have this. So thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Shockey. All right, we've got one more matter in this proclamation category, and that is also National Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, 2023. And the proclamation, in conjunction with that, I'll read it momentarily here, but Brian Olson, our Public Works Director, is with us this evening. And we always get a really interesting update from him on the work that his team is doing, that he and his team are doing. So the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives; and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, and streets; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Edina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by a member, Jackson, second by a member, Rissler, to adopt May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And welcome, Director Olson. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for approving that proclamation and reading it. The American Public Works Association is proud to announce connecting the world through public works is this year's theme for National Public Works Week. Public works is the thread that connects us, no matter where you live in the world. Every public works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community that they serve. The theme highlights the many ways public works and engineering professionals connect us physically through infrastructure and inspirationally through the services that we deliver. Whether as a first responder or the daily work that we do every day with pride, we value this community and the role that public works and engineering professionals play in keeping it safe and functioning smoothly. For the last 63 years, National Public Works Week is designed to raise awareness for the roles and responsibilities that public works has within the community. Every year comes with challenges, and this year was no different. Whether it was responding to record snowfall totals, supply chain issues with equipment replacements and equipment repairs, or simply replacing a lift station that serves almost 60% of the residents of this community, the public works and engineering professionals took that challenge on. And we thank you for the support that you've given us through the years, and really thank you for the recognition for National Public Works Week as the 21st through the 27th of this year. So...
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding Public Works Week?
I just want to say a special thank you to your team. They're always polite and responsive. And this was an incredibly snowy winter. And I know it took a lot of patience and a lot of long hours. So thank you to you and thank you to your team. Because we talk a lot about safety, but public works is a huge part of what makes it a safe place to live. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Other comments? Good. Your team does such fabulous work. And I suspect when this new Quality Life Survey comes out, we'll be number one in the country in snow power removal, or snow removal again, and snow plowing service. So...
Well, it's always the goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the ruination of every kid's winter. No school days yet. No days. I'm going to hand you the proclamation record. You have that for your records. And thank you for all you do for Edina.
All right, we've got a couple more matters in this portion of the agenda. The next matter is update on the Clean Water Strategy Phase Two, vision, values, and goals and priorities update. And Jessica Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, is with us to make that presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to be here with you tonight to talk about an update to the Clean Water Strategy Phase Two. And my goal for tonight is to give you a preview of what we will be presenting to the public to seek their input and feedback as we develop the vision and the priorities for the Clean Water Strategy. So I'm interested in your reactions to these initial drafts, as well as the direction that we're heading. And also wanting to take in any questions that you have for the community that we should bring to them as we engage with them on this phase. So why are we developing a Clean Water Strategy? Waters in Edina are in an unhealthy equilibrium. And a new vision for Clean Water in Edina is necessary to incorporate modern, evolving scientific understanding of shallow urban-like ecology and meet the expectations of residents for health, access, service, and environmental stewardship. So in our Water Resources Management Plan, that was approved in 2018 and then amended in 2022, we included a commitment to develop this Clean Water Strategy to wrap our arms around what are we trying to achieve? How do we meet that goal? What is the cost and pace of achievement to meet that goal? And how do we program in activities and implement those to meet those goals? So we're currently in Phase Two. Phase One was a baseline assessment of where we are with our program currently. And we've referenced in the staff report where to get a rundown of that Phase One work. And we're in Phase Two right now, which is to establish the vision. And when I say vision, I mean distilling the values and setting goals and establishing the priorities. And all of that has to happen, that policy-setting work has to happen, before we can get into those nitty-gritty details of what and where we're going to do that work. So that will be a future Phase Three. So we're honing in on just Phase Two right now. And we need to define the vision and the priorities and base that on customer expectations, as well as our legal and stakeholder requirements, and what the city can provide. So through this Phase Two, we're seeking clarity and consensus on the vision. What are the values of the community and the goals for our water resources in the community? And then clarity and consensus on the priorities. So we're looking for feedback and input from leadership and from the community before we can move on to Phase Three. So we're going to engage the public here coming up at the end of June. We've got a bunch of meetings. They're all going to be the same, online opportunities as well as in person at the very end of June. And we're going to try and scatter those on different days, different times of days, different locations, to capture the most people. And it'll be open house style with boards describing the materials that I'm going to preview for you today. to preview for you today, so that we can have conversations with people and and get their input on our initial ideas. We are going to set the stage with some of those materials that we developed in Phase One, which was that baseline setting of where we're at and what's what's working or not working currently. So we have some draft themes for the vision, and we we've kept them at this theme level because this is not, you know, word for word what it ought to be. This is just this technical review of the what we've collected as far as stakeholder and legal requirements to put into a vision that we will hope to get a lot of feedback on and and have some community fingerprints on. And then draft priority pollutants and draft priority water bodies. We were we, as an industry, are struggling with how to achieve clean water in our careers or lifetimes, and so we took an initial stab at what this looks like because we thought that would be something for people to react to might be a good way to start versus having people tell us what where we should go. So but all very, very much fluid and and open for input. So the engagement level is to involve people. So the premise to the public is to work with them to ensure that concerns and aspirations are reflected in the vision and goals, that they're developed with the community, and we have we can describe how their input influenced the decision. So as we were framing up this initial vision and priorities, we had a few framing ideas, and the first one is to focus on outcomes at the water resources. So the current Water Resources Management Paradigm in Edina is currently based on ad hoc and check the box regulatory activities that don't sink with resident expectations and resident requests for service which are ephemeral or uninformed. The status quo hasn't moved the needle in achieving outcomes at the resource, and in some cases moves us farther from clean water. So instead of focusing on activities, we want to focus on the outcome at the resource. We also want to build off what we know about community values. This is also so far just a technical review of these strategic plans. We have not yet gone out to the public, so these might change as we get into that that next phase of engagement. So these are initial themes. They're briefly they're abbreviated there, and I'll provide a little bit more context in the following slides. But we've based that on the budget pillars, city values, quality of life surveys, and regulatory and stakeholder requirements. And so those themes, which I'll share in a little bit more depth here, can map onto those strategic plans and initiatives. And then the third framing piece is to apply principles of asset management. So water resources aren't infrastructure, but we can apply asset management principles to systematically identify, assess, prioritize, and manage risks. So asset management is a common approach used in utility asset management. We need to establish our strategic objectives, set that vision and goal, so that we can focus on meeting them in a systematic, risk-based, prioritized, and cost-effective manner. So these are the draft themes that we've set distilled from the values of the strategic documents that we have available and setting some goals. I didn't put all the goals in here, they're in the staff report, but that would be a really boring slide, so I've left those off, but they're detailed there. So the first one, ecosystems are in a healthy equilibrium, water is clear, and environmental benefits are sustained. City actions align to do the most good towards measurable, desirable, clean water outcomes, leveraging creativity and innovation. People are connected to the land and water in reciprocity, both caring for nature and enjoying the benefits of a healthy environment, and all people have access to water and the cultural values and environmental benefits they provide. So these are the values that we've tried to distill from those from that information that we have available. And then the goals, again, are more detailed in the staff report. And then, of course, the next step is to go to the community and say, is this reflective of your values? What do we need to change? What do we need to adjust to make it a better fit? The next thing that we're going to present to people are are some draft priority pollutants. And the three that we've set aside here are nutrients, which includes phosphorus and nitrogen, those things that encourage vegetation to grow or algae to grow. And then the top right picture, that's a harmful agobloom from a local lake. Next is chloride, and that picture in the middle is a parking lot that has a lot of chloride used for snow and ice winter maintenance. And then sediment, and that picture on the bottom left is a bunch of sediment. In the corner of the picture is the outfall from the storm pipe, and all of that sediment over years accumulates at the end of the pipe. And we just recognize our our fabulous public works staff, and they've already dealt with this one and cleaned it up, so that's no longer an issue, but it's representative of just the way that those systems function and where those pollutants end up, and then we've got to mitigate that material. We also heard some community comment back in February at the February meeting, and then some council support for including chloride in the Clean Water Strategy, and we've done that here, including it as draft priority pollutant, and then also in our water body prioritization, where explicitly we're prioritizing water bodies that have chloride impairments, so they're already exceeding the recommended level for that pollutant, or they have data that suggests that they do, even if they're not federally listed yet. And then implicitly including it in our prioritization by prioritizing water bodies that have a large impervious drainage area where presumably more of that winter maintenance activity is occurring. And then draft water bodies. So we have some criteria for priority water bodies based on existing water quality conditions, physical geographic settings, so that's things like impervious area in the upstream watershed and size of the water body, and then socioeconomic factors, things like access, use, and public engagement. And I this is an initial draft list that I know will change as we go through the process, but I think the earlier we get a list out with actual water body names on it, the better, and then we can start that debate of what should be where as far as tiers. These aren't in any particular order, so think of them more as like categories in tier one, those are all all those top four are in the same tier, they're not necessarily ranked one through four. And this is also just based on that technical review of imperviousness, size, public access, those things, but still needs some of that input from the community of what the local priorities are. So the next steps, we're doing this community engagement process through June, and then we'll be back in front of you for a work session and then a decision, we're thinking in August and September. And then beyond, that we'll decide later as we scope up Phase Three and what that looks like and beyond. And all of this will likely end up with requiring a major amendment to the Water Resources Management Plan. So with in closing, I just want to preview some of these materials before we bring them to the public. If you have any reactions to the the approach or the direction or those elements in particular, we'd love to hear them now as we're we're pulling together materials and and printing and inviting people to meetings in the in the coming weeks. And then also, if you have any specific questions that you'd like us to bring to the community so that you can have that information as you're making your decisions later this year, I'd love to collect those today, too.
Good. Let me ask council members if they have any comments or questions for Ms. Wilson. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Ms. Wilson. This is always a good thing to learn about, and I'm so proud that we take care of our water here in Edina. Two things. One is I attended the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Annual Meeting, and they talked about the threat of blue-green algae, and we've got it here at Lake Cornelia, and it's only growing, and it's going to grow with climate change. I hope that one of the themes that it was in, it was embedded in there, but I'd like to see it higher in the priority is health and safety, because we're really worried, you know, a dog goes swimming in the lake and they get sick, and that gets expensive, and it can be heartbreaking. So I hope that health and safety are are high priorities in the theme and doing this because it can be expensive, but we're just only going to see more and more pollution that can be harmful, even deadly, in our lakes. So that's one thing I would like to add. The other thing is I just want to note that looking at income instead of activity and asset management principles, I love that because they can use data, they're predictable, and instead of being random and everything, we know this is how we're going to do it, and we're doing this according to the things, principles that we've set out, and then data that we've gathered to achieve those principles. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just had two things. So thanks for your presentation. I I do feel like we've kind of looked at this before, and I feel very confident that the focus that we're going to have in terms of of the Clean Water is the right focus. So no questions there at all. But the two things I wanted to highlight are, one is engagement, and so on Slide 10, I think the last theme talked about, making sure all people have access to water. I love that. One of the challenges in Edina is ensuring, though, that we get input across the community. And so I would just ask to really think about, once we we have people committed to come in and give feedback, let's take a step back and and look at the map and ensure that we're getting representation broadly across the community. So that's one. And then the second actually drives the first point that I made. I think there's a a messaging challenge from a communication standpoint, because and and this is this is agnostic of issue, but there's a propensity to not really care about something if you don't feel like you're using it. And for sure, we have that with lakes, right? There's a a thought that lakes are they're all private, they're for private use only, and like we know that that is not true holistically. But if people feel that way, then they are going to be less likely to engage. And so I think really thinking about how we can communicate to the broader community, what actually is the value in the community broadly for having clean water? Whether or not you swim in it, or your dog bathes in it, or what have you, really thinking about what are some of those messages that we can share within the community to get more people excited or at least interested in caring about the work that's in front of us here? So those would be the two things that I would I would offer. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Member Pierce. Member Risher.
I have a question, and this is not based on something that I've looked up, but my understanding is that for residents who live around a body of water, if they're concerned about something like loose strife or something, they need to organize and create. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Because that that is involving engagement, but.
Yeah, and our current policy, there are elective services, and so for elective services, things like submerged aquatic plant control, so not invasive species control, but just generally like no plants, which we don't recommend, by the way. You can form a lake association, organize your group, so that then there's a majority voice speaking to the city instead of, you know, one or two people that are kind of making the call for the entire group. So that's that engagement piece there if you want to be eligible for elective services. There are things that the city will provide regardless of if you have a lake association or not, and algae control is one of those, and so is aquatic invasive species control. So you don't have to have an organized lake association to be eligible for aquatic invasive species, like curly leaf pond weed, but for those other elective services, they're detailed in the policy of which things are elective and which things are city subsidized. Purple loose strife, though, is we consider that more of like a terrestrial plant, so it's kind of in that boundary, that wetland boundary, so it's kind of in between water and land. But I think the strategies for managing purple loose strife are a land management strategy, so that we have not included purple loose strife specifically in water resources.
It does end up taking over the lakes. Good to know. Thank you.
You know, sitting here, listening to you make make your report and thinking about the passage of time and when the state passed the legacy amendment and the the relationship of Minnesotans to clean water and that long history of thinking about how we want to make sure that our natural waters are as clean as they can be. We're working on that in Edina. And when they went about making that developing that strategy around how to get that legacy amendment passed, because it involved the arts, it involved fishing and hunting, and it involved clean water, when they did focus groups, clean water was far and away the thing that people were most concerned about in Minnesota, and so that 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 was the theme that was developed to get that legacy amendment passed. I think it's just illustrative of how much Minnesotans care about clean water. And for us to have begun work on this and to have people like you working for us that are qualified, highly qualified, to do this kind of work and to try to get our natural waters restored and to make sure that that we have clean drinking water for our residents and that our sanitary sewer systems work properly and our storm waters properly managed, as witnessed most recently by this mega project we have down at Weber Park, which is going to serve a dual purpose of being not only a stormwater management system but a a beautiful park at some point in time. So thanks for thanks to you and all of your team over there that are working on these water issues for us and and bringing these things to us. I think it's really critically important, and I'm I'm proud of our town that we're that we care about this issue, and we're trying to make sure that we that we lead on this issue with respect to to clean water. So, thanks. Okay, we've got one more matter on this portion of the agenda. I know it looks like there's two, but we've got to take up 7G, and we've got to move that to another date for the City Council because we're missing our subject matter expert. But first, let's go to our Community Health and Safety Center update, and we have Rachel Feinberg with us, Finberg, our park planner, and she's going to give a brief presentation on how we're coming along on our fire station number two.
Thank you, Mary. City Council members, I'm here today to provide a 30% design review with you. Our consultants have pulled together all of the feedback and information that we've been gathering through the process, provided us with a 30% design package, and I will hit those highlights today. So I'll start looking a little bit at our landscape and site layout, some of our floor plans, some of the architectural design, and then also some of the sustainability items. So just to kind of overview a little bit about our project timeline, we kicked off this fall with BKV as our design group. We got together with staff and did Values Viewfinder, kind of establishing those goals. We then also went out to the community with Values Viewfinder, reiterating those goals and looking for what they were looking for in community spaces. We then came to council to take a look at the concepts that we had created. We then also had another public hearing or open house with the public to review those concepts, to see how the input and feedback that they gave us were reflected in our designs. So we have taken all of that information to date and put it into these 30% designs. So the first thing that we're going to take a look at is our landscape and civil design. Some of these site features that I'd like to highlight is the emphasis on parking, looking at both the fact that these are impervious surfaces and looking to use permeable materials. We have designated public areas using the Southdale Guidelines and creating those as more of a street parking, and then also having secured staff parking as well. Other highlights of our site layout are the pedestrian and bicycle-friendly aspects. We actually have two entrances. One is actually right off of 76th Street, again promoting that pedestrian and welcoming aspect, but then also a second entrance that they can use the parking for. The last thing that I kind of wanted to highlight are those sustainability features. So really focusing on native and pollinator areas, wildlife and water a water feature, and again, like Jessica was talking about with our water strategies, that chloride reduction, so looking at how the layout plays into that as well. So the next thing that we're going to take a look at is our first level floor plan. So this area, we kind of took input and feedback from our fire staff, as well as our public health, and then also some of those community comments. So really focusing on our fire response times. So really, if you look at those red areas, those are our firefighter workspaces, so what the response time is from those to the apparatus space to maximize that as well. And then also looking at how we could create collaboration spaces. So the purple areas are our public health. These will be very customer-friendly, and then the periwinkle are our public spaces. So really focusing on interaction with the public and opportunities. So you'll see there is a larger public meeting room, probably the best way to say is it's probably kind of from where I am to the to the hall there. So that's going to be about the size of the gathering space that we're going to be creating, but then also creating another conference room, so kind of similar to how we have the mayor's conference room. Again, two different sized spaces for multifunctional needs. Again, two different sized spaces for multifunctional needs. The other area that I kind of wanted to showcase is our physical conditioning room. So, as you can see, that is in the yellow. A lot of this is focused on wellness, not just firefighter wellness, but also city wellness. So, this is an opportunity for the city to create a space that city staff could use. So, that's what that area is as well.
Good.
And then, the last thing that I kind of wanted to touch on is safety and security. So, you'll notice that we kind of have a clear delineation of spaces. Again, this is for both employee safety and also for the flow of spaces. Again, because we want there to be a direct connection from if somebody comes for a walk-in on a blood pressure check, you can bring them from the public space to, straight to an ambulance and be able to have good response time on that as well.
Before you switch the slides, could I ask you a question about the public meeting room in the upper left-hand corner, just for spatial orientation purposes? How does that size, how does the size of that room compare to the room over at Public Works that we use?
It is smaller than the room at Public Works. It's probably about the same size as the half division when you use Public Works. So, this is going to be about, we figured about 40 to 60 would be able to be seated in that one format. If you're going for tables, it would be a little bit different. We also did it looking at the opportunity for a polling station for this. And this, as far as square footage goes, would also be probably about the right size, if not right in the range we were looking for for that as well.
I thought at some point in our conversations, our preliminary conversations, we had talked about, and the staff had mentioned the ability to hold some pretty good-sized public meetings in there. And so, for me, as I think about some of the meetings we've had at Public Works, that seemed to be about right-sized for conversations around land use and small area plans, and conversation about the Dan Patch Line and possible rail. You know, that seemed like a good-sized room for getting the number of people in there that you wanted to be able to accommodate and still do some things. So, I'm a little bit concerned about the size of this room, frankly.
We had kind of targeted it more, not for the 100, but the 40 to 60, so we had that multipurpose for training as well. Any larger than this, we would be looking at, again, that room divider system, and so the layout would be a little bit different, and the flow would be different as well.
I don't want to second-guess your thinking on it, but just want to make sure that we can accommodate the uses intended.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, for me?
Yeah, Member Jackson?
It would be nice to see sort of what kind of meetings are we currently holding where the space is 40 to 60. That would be useful input for us, I think.
Sure.
Because that comes to mind. So, if we need that space, we don't have it, I'd like to know that.
Yep, and I'll check in with MJ about that, and we can provide you with those numbers too.
Great, thank you.
Because we don't have too many times when we're hosting simultaneous meetings of 100 or more people, so that, and we have to park whatever we put here too, which is one of the forces that we're trying to deal with.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. With that, I'm going to proceed to the second level. So, this is the Level 2 floor plan. So, this is primarily fire staff. And I really wanted you guys to remember that this is a firefighter's home too, so that's really what our focus was on this, making sure that we gave them safety, security, lower stress levels. So, every, all of those items were brought into design, giving them some personal space, some division of their day life, which is downstairs, and their time upstairs as well. But, in addition to that, you'll see there's numerous dorms, but there's also collaboration space. Just like any home, the kitchen can be the center of activity, so we really wanted to create those types of spaces for the firefighters as well, both inside and outside. So, you'll see there's also an outdoor patio space that they can use, that we've screened and created some privacy for. So, again, just that firefighter wellness and sense of family that we really wanted to create. And other items in this too, that we wanted to think about, again, decreasing those stress levels, so really looking into the acoustics, the flow, again, that response time. You will see there are two fire poles, so that they can have two options when they're responding to things as well. So, the next few slides are going to just be on some of that exterior concepts. So, again, just touching on a little bit of our goals with our exterior, we really wanted to touch on the Southdale Design Standards, so looking at some of that natural materials, but really giving it a sense of civic pride, and also giving it a sense of that this is a fire station. We didn't want that also to be lost, and we wanted people to feel welcome and secure to come to this location. So, you'll see, again, that pedestrian piece and entry is going to be on the far side of that building too. But, again, just that statement of this is a fire station, and this is the purpose of it.
So, when you think about that natural stone, you're thinking about the land and stone like we used on City Hall, and it kind of marks our
Yep.
...our walls in our town that we have stone, where we have stone walls.
Yeah, and again, that also ties too into the Southdale Standards, again, those ideas of those rooms. So, creating again that look. And then, you'll also see there's a nice training tower there as well.
And so, you know, a couple weeks ago, I asked about, could we get, I was at a presentation and the mayor of Mississauga, Ontario, said they were building a net zero fire station. And it made me think about, oh, can we build a net zero fire station, or what's the incremental cost of going net zero? Have you given that some thought, or is getting as close to net zero as we can?
Yes, so that's actually one of our sustainability goals, to at least be examining and seeing what the benefits and the costs would be of that. With this project, because we weren't sure where we were going to be for unfunding sources, we are pursuing B3, which is a Minnesota program. So, it's Likely, but the Minnesota local version. And with that comes a lot of those investigations into those sustainability items.
Good. Well, thanks for making that analysis. I think the council will want to hear about it.
So, again, here's just a few more images. The one on the bottom shows you a little bit more of that community space. Again, just trying to create one of those, a very welcoming space for everyone, room for both inside and outside gathering for the public and the community, but also relaxing and comforting spaces for the firefighters as well.
I'll send you an email.
And then, this is a view from the back, and it shows the training tower. It shows a little bit of that firefighter workspaces, and then it also shows that fitness facility.
Can you go back and just give the orientation for the street?
So, the street view is going to be this one here.
That's 76th.
Off 76th. So, this would be coming from France, down 76th.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
When you go two elevations beyond this one, well, first of all, back up one, you know, you see elements of City Hall here, which I think is kind of a nice tip of the hat, a great piece of architecture here that our residents built years ago. And then, the next slide, what I liked when you went to the backside is that it kept its architectural integrity.
Correct.
So, all four sides have really strong architectural integrity. I think that's really important to do.
Yeah, and I think that's one thing too, that's unique about this project too, is because we are setting the standard for an area, the fact that, you know, typically you could just say that 76th is your public view, but we want to say that all sides are our public view.
Yep. It'd be great when you come back, as we talk about making sure that the community views this as like their space. I, the, I think maybe two back, that view is, and this is the back, right?
This is the front, yep.
And so, this is not engaging, right? It's actually intimidating.
Sure.
But, then when you show, I think, two forward, you show that
This one.
That one.
Yep.
That one, that view is engaging. And so, the, when you come back, it would be great to be able to visualize how people might interact with these spaces. It's a little challenging to do that today, which makes sense.
Councilmember Pierce, one thing I wanted to address with that, if we can go back to this, is one challenge we have is that is our emergency traffic full hour.
Right, yeah.
So, that's one reason why we almost purposely have it, kind of not necessarily inviting there, but that public side is where we're trying to direct people to go, so that we really have a safe access point and can keep the emergency traffic out of there without kind of being, if you come to Station 1 right now, that's kind of your parking spot, and it can be kind of confusing as to where I go in. That might be one of the reasons why that looks a little less inviting off 76th.
And I probably shared this story before, I know I have, but my daughter was having friends over, Tracy, they were having challenges with another friend, didn't know what to do, tried to do it on their own for hours, finally called someone, which was me. I go over and I say, hey, you're right next to the fire station. You guys could have just gone there and gotten help, and they didn't realize that they could do that. And so, as we talk about this community health piece, I don't know how to make the space engaging. Having the health piece there is going to actually accomplish some of that, because there would be some frequency that I think people will be there, so that will definitely help some. But, that's really the nature of how the lens I'm looking through when I look at some of these elevations, so.
One other note on this elevation is the northwest corner kind of does have a public access point off 76th Street that I think we can take in notes to try to make that a little bit more inviting on that north side especially.
Can I ask a question about that too? How, on like a general day, not thinking of like very specific events, or, you know, election day or something like that, but in general, how many non-employee guests would you anticipate being on-site at any given moment?
Councilmember Agnew, at Fire Station 1 right now, we see a handful of non-employee guests that come through, whether that's blood pressure checks, people asking about fire permits, et cetera. So, you know, I'd say less than 10 a day for sure at there. Now, this training space that we have is obviously a place that we hope to invite and open up to make it easier access for residents to be able to schedule even without fire department operational impact. So, we would expect that number to increase, as well as, as Councilmember Pierce mentioned, just the public health access point there, really being able to communicate and broadcast that this is a space you can come to get services. So, not a huge demand right now, but something we're looking to increase.
Yeah, thank you. That's really helpful, because I think even, you know, Member Pierce, as you're speaking about how to invite people in, I think about personally, even as I drive by the fire station that we have today, I don't think of it as being a welcoming place, because there's usually not any cars there that I see, and I'm like, oh, is it closed? And I don't really understand that part of it. And so, as I look at this, as, because this is going to be the main through fare, right, that people are driving by, it isn't as welcoming on that west side. You need to drive into the parking lot, and then you get that welcoming entry area. But, that's really just for people that are arriving in their cars and then going into a parking lot, which for most purposes, right, if there are 10 people or even 20 people a day, like, there might be one other vehicle there at any given time. And so, I was even thinking about like reorienting and having employee parking, or like the firefighter parking on that side to show like there are people here and you can come in, and trying to like use that as a signal in a way, rather than hiding that in the back. And so, I don't know if that's necessarily the answer, but just one thing that popped into my mind of, as I'm driving by someplace, if there aren't any cars, I'll think it's closed.
That's a very good point, thank you.
Okay, Member Richard?
Can we go back to the image where we just were? Okay, and then, that sidewalk looks very nice and inviting and wide. I'm thinking that's an eight-foot sidewalk, perhaps?
Correct.
All right. I just want to say that for anyone here who has not taken the time to walk on the eight-foot wide sidewalk that is near the roundabout, near Our Lady of Grace and all that, when you walk on an eight-foot sidewalk, it feels welcoming. And it's not a space where you feel like you have to just, you know, scuttle by really quickly. And so, I want to put that out there, and I just want to say that I really appreciate that. The one thing that kind of pops out that I don't really understand is that projection that is kind of off of the second, it's like there's a big white box sort of popping out. Do you know what I'm talking about? What is that, and why is that there? I don't know.
Michael, can you help with this? I'm going to pass it off to an architect, because he can answer that a lot better than I can.
Hello, good evening. I'm Michael Haley with BKV Group, representing the architecture firm. That, right now, is just a architectural element. It's not, it is used a little bit for shading, so some sustainability feature to it, but it's just an architectural element of expression on that side. And also, want to note, part of the reason this might not feel welcoming from this angle is the main entrance is kind of tucked behind that projection that you're talking about. There is a canopy that sticks out, you can just see the little brow of it.
Oh, yeah.
So, once you maneuver just a little bit further down the street, you would start to see that the lobby space and the community room that's going to be more transparent, there's going to be a lot of glass, a lot of lights, you'll see activity, you'll see welcoming features from that aspect.
I think also another piece to note on this too is the building setback is based kind of on those Southdale Standards. So, again, giving in and giving different items of it in order to make that work. So, some of it seems a little bit more imposing that way, because it's meeting with some of those standards as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Member Jackson?
Thank you. So, next time, or when you take this to the public, or whoever looks at it next, it would be nice to see it from the northwest.
Sure.
This is from the northeast, and then we could get a sense of what that, on pedestrian and public entrance it looks like, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Member Richard.
There could be rooms for, you know, maybe a picnic table, or, you know, some kind of thing on the green space, just building on that, make it a little more welcoming.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that architectural element, actually, I think it's a nice feature of it. But, as we've been having this discussion, I'm thinking about Bloomington City Hall and their art center. You know, there's different ways you can get in that building, and you just learn over time, because that is such a big building, depending on where you want to go. If you want to go in that sort of main entrance by where the art center is, or the Performing Arts Theater, that looks like the main entrance, but really, all the business takes place on the backside, and there's different entrances over there that aren't quite as welcoming. But, I think people get used to understanding how the building functions over time and know where to go. So, I too join my colleagues in saying, I'm eager to see that elevation with the northwest view, because that's, that other side where the main entrance is for people and for meetings, that is welcoming, just like it is here, this sort of open, you know, it kind of pulls you in. And I think this City Hall does the same thing, and this will do something comparable to that. Okay? Anything else you want to show us?
The last thing that I was going to just touch on was some of those sustainability items. So, the ones that are in boxes are the ones that we've highlighted as our highest priority. So, EUI, which is energy use impact, so we're trying to reduce the energy use. Carbon reduction, we're also looking at that SB 2030, which is part of that B3 process. Looking again at that net zero and cost-effective ways that we could achieve that. And then, also looking at alternate designs and looking at creative solutions. And so, these can be accomplished by some of our orientation and layout, also our material choices, some of the equipment that we're going to choose. We're looking at some alternate HVAC solutions, doing some geothermal testing and things of that nature, and then also looking at controls. Again, this is a 24-hour facility, but looking at how we can optimize that by zoning things off as well. So, part of that too, I just wanted to highlight was the look at solar feasibility. I know that we've been talking a lot about solar lately, and so, we're looking into what our maximum potential is and how this will not only meet the goals and initiatives of this building, but also the city's policies, and also some of our green initiatives. So, again, looking green initiatives. So again, looking at all of the potential options and again, seeing how that will lay out within the budget. So last thing, I just was going to talk about some next steps. So we have our meeting today. Our next touch point will be with a planning review and a public hearing. And then we'll come back in front of you with those advisements. And then after that, we will be looking for finishing our design and going out for a construction bid and looking at probably the winter of 2023 for our construction award, hoping to start construction in the spring of 2024, and then opening and having an open house in the fall of 2025. So with that, if there are any additional questions, either for me or for the rest of our project team.
Question? Yeah, Member Risher.
I just want to make sure since we've got the fire station right next to the community health center, that these are on two separate systems so that if we want to really reduce the heating and cooling when nobody's in the community center, we can do that and they're not, okay, good.
Correct. And things will all have occupancy sensors as well to be looking at.
Is there anything that has been given up that the, you know, firefighters want that is not here? Kind of like, are we missing something?
Councilmember Risher, thank you for that question. I think right now, we have our team putting in all the designs, putting in all the desirables that we have. And then all that feeds into that budget process. So at this point, we have everything in here. We've designed everything. The team's very excited about the project. And then we just have continued conversations with the construction manager and the entire design team on making sure it fits all those needs. So at this point, there's been no value engineering done to try to, you know, take one priority over another at this point.
All right. Thanks for that update. All right, now, our sustainability coordinator, Grace Hancock, is home ill. And so she's a subject matter expert with respect to item 8G or 7G, excuse me, and then item 8A, which is the public hearing. And I think Manager Neil suggested that we move all of these, move both these matters to the June 6, 2023 meeting. So is there a motion to that effect that we move items 7G and 8A to the June 6, 2023 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce that we move the item 7G and item 7G and 8A to the June 6, 2023 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we're under reports and recommendations. And we've got, the first matter there is Resolution 2023-33, Accepting Donations. Let me get to that matter. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-33?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adopt Resolution 2023-33, which is donations to the city of Edina. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-33, Accepting Donations to the city of Edina, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now if I can find it. Here we go. Just wanted to report out for some of these folks. Oh yeah, this is the time of the year when people have been making donations related, I suppose, tax-related donations. Quite a few donations to the Braemar Golf Course Memorial Fund, the Braemar Memorial Fund. Tim Tinberg, Robert Altman Seager, Bob Seager was in Rotary with us, Paul Prestus, who works out at the golf course, Pat Redden, Tony Ferlato, Chuck Waite, Rick Sobalka, Amy Smith, who works for the city, Alan Beal and Jack Minchell. Thanks for all those gifts, all those donors. We'll post your names on the city website. And then the Edina Senior Center had some gifts, some in kind, but ISC Financial Advisors, Senior Communities Guide, Friends of the Edina Public Library, Katie Bean and company and her self-health. A lot of activity over there to Senior Center. And then a donation from Caribou Coffee for the Park and Rec Department for an Earth Day Community Clothing Swap Event we had out at the Ash Arena. Okay, that's it for that one. And then the next matter is one that involves a discussion around the Resolution 2023, Proposed Resolution 2023-35, which could potentially be an opposition resolution to the proposed merger of Sanford Health and M Health Fairview. By the way, I probably got to just say that Manager Neil and I had a, have had one virtual call with the CEO of Sanford several months ago because, as we all know, this is our city's largest employer and it's an important issue for us. I've also had a conversation with Chuck Moody, who used to live in Edina, who was on the board of Fairview for years and then was the interim CEO of Fairview, M Health Fairview for, I think, almost a year until they hired James Hereford, who's the present CEO. And I got his views on the proposed merger. I haven't shared those with any of you. But I'm going to have to recuse myself from this conversation, I think, because my youngest daughter is the Director of Communications for Sanford Health. So she's got some important responsibilities down there. And I just think I don't want to put that, her employer in an awkward situation. I want to put myself in an awkward situation, the city or all of you that are going to have this conversation. So I'm going to turn now to our Deputy Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem, James Pierce, and ask him to handle this conversation around this potential resolution involving the proposed merger of Sanford Health and M Health Fairview. Member Pierce.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for this particular item opposing the proposed merger of Sanford Health and M Health Fairview, Manager Neil, did you want to kick this off?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Pierce and members of council. We had some very brief discussion about taking a position on this subject. And I think I advised the council at that point that if you were going to take a position on this particular issue, it would be wise to do it soon as it is, its timeline is unknown, but it is going to reach conclusion, we think, sometime this summer, probably early summer, possibly as early as early May. So in terms of drafting resolutions like this that take a position on an issue of the day, it was, it's wise to start with something rather than to bring in a blank page. So I started, I started with the position that you were more interested than less interested in opposing the proposed merger. So that's where the drafting started. I did have a chance to seek some input during the drafting process from Councilmember Agnew because she had expressed the interest that kind of started this initiative in bringing this to you. And I heard from Councilmember Risher later in that process too. So they, Councilmember Agnew at least had a chance to give me a little bit of input here. And a lot of that, I think, is shown in the second whereas around economics, but also in other choices during the drafting of the resolution as well. In any document like this, the whereas statements are important, but the most important statement is what comes after, now therefore be it resolved. Because ultimately, a resolution like this gets you on a list, you know, a list of, here are the entities that have expressed support for this merger and here are the entities that have expressed concern or opposition to the merger. And that's really where I think if you're going to adopt a resolution like this is where you want to be. So that, so to be clear about that statement about what you're resolving is really critical to expressing the will of the council on this. And I think in terms, that's all the tee-up that I have for you.
Oh yeah. Thank you.
Member Agnew.
Thank you, Member Pierce. So this was a direct result of, I think it was just the last meeting that we had, where we had a resident, really kind of bring this to my attention of specific, I think, practices that were potentially concerning when we thought about Sanford, you know, being such a prominent member employer within this community. And so after that, obviously looked into it, conducted a bit of research on my own, and then reached out to City Manager Scott Neal to just kick off the discussion of exploration, of looking partially for, you know, are the things that I have found in my own research sustained? Like, has he found similar things? Like, is that kind of the general conversation? But then also just wanting to explore, what does it look like as a city for us to have a stance on something like this? So Manager Neil really appreciated the tee-up as well of what are the implications and why would we consider something like this? For me, and the reason that it rose to a level of really concern and wanting to have the conversation at the council is specifically when we think about, you know, the future of reproductive rights and specifically gender-affirming healthcare services. Those, I think, are two things that are really important to me and to members of this community and want to make sure that the healthcare provider that we have within our hospital system here within the city is in alignment with that. So that's why, that's where the conversation really started. And just really want to hear, obviously from Member Risher, from other people on the council of where everyone's thoughts are.
Thank you, Member Agnew. Member Risher.
First, I would like to thank Manager Neil for putting this together. It reads very clearly and very well. I also want to thank Member Agnew for all of the material that she has brought to the table here. And I too have a lot of concerns about this proposed merger. I appreciate the way that this has been worded. The one thing that I believe the resident mentioned was that we should make a specific ask to the Mayo Clinic to step in or something like that, if I'm remembering correctly. However, I think that would have been, I like it as it is. And I do feel that the University of Minnesota, particularly the history of its medical program, has been so outstanding. And I really hate to see things happen that take away from that. And it, you know, so it's really been hard to watch this whole process move forward. It's hard to take a stand. It's never possible to take a stand without, you know, having some reservations. But I think this is a case where we need to take a stand and I would support this resolution.
Thank you, Member Risher. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Member Pierce. Yeah, thank you, Member Agnew, for bringing this forward. I guess I am of two minds. One is, I am extremely concerned about losing reproductive care, reproductive rights and reproductive care. And that's really, it's something that's now suddenly a concern everywhere in this country and where we felt safe before. I guess I have a question for you, Manager Neil. Tell me some about what the economic discussion is around this merger. Because it would be devastating to our community to have this hospital closed. And it's my understanding that it's been, there are some serious financial concerns that are driving this merger. And can you tell us some more detail on that?
I can. I will have to admit that I don't know a great deal of the details. I think we do know from public information that Fairview, M Health Fairview is not fiscally strong at the moment. They have a large operating deficit, particularly compared to Sanford, which is part of the reason that there have been some interest in this merger. We have not heard, I have not heard or seen anything in the public sphere about the possibility of closing our hospital here in Edina. When we had, when the mayor and I had a visit with the Sanford Health CEO, there was, he made no mention of that. And in fact, we asked him and we were clear that they view this as an important asset in their discussion. So I have not heard that. The information in the resolution regarding economic impact is, was generated by M Health Fairview and I believe it was 2021 data. And it's for their system-wide. It wasn't specific to their Edina healthcare assets. We tried to look for a way to sort of, see if we could draw that out of the aggregate data and could not with any degree of reliability. So that's what I can tell you about that.
Well, I think that's been a concern for quite a while, that they're losing money. I guess I would prefer to stay out of it. I really, I think it's important, but it's also really important to me that we not lose these guys as an employer in town. And I think it will work out one way or another. And I don't know if this will have a big impact one way or another, our voting on it. But I just don't, it feels too political for getting into details about how do different laws apply between South Dakota and Minnesota. And I think the teaching hospital is going to be pulled away. I don't think the University of Minnesota is going to give that up. I think that's going to be, the Attorney General's working on that. And that's the most important part to me. But now, again, Manager Neil, I have another question. Sanford Health is a nonprofit or is it a for-profit organization? Do you know?
I believe they are a non, I believe they're also a nonprofit, I think.
So yeah, I guess I would prefer to stay neutral.
Okay. Thank you, Member Jackson. So when I reviewed this, there are a couple of things that stood out to me. And so I actually wasn't, wasn't quite sure what perspective would be the driving force behind this. And the first time we talked about it, my thought was, it was important for us to have entities that are in Minnesota owning and operating these, owning and operating the hospital. And so the North Dakota or South Dakota versus Minnesota, with the sense that we would have more control if it's an entity that's in Minnesota. That was the original way I was thinking about this. And so then, as I read through with that thought, I was challenged seeing the whereas reaffirming reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services. I view that as a very specific thing that actually, if we are going to get into the politics of it, then we could actually discuss that particular issue and have some resolution or state some position around that even. However, M Health is kind of near and dear to our family. My middle daughter is diabetic. And we have seen personally, as the healthcare system is stressed nationally, the first thing you do is you consolidate, right? You try to leverage resources. And we see that even happening from a pharmacy perspective. And so just sharing a story, we were, we're, Blue Cross Blue Shield is our insurer. That changed for us because insurance is coming from my job. The pharmacy was Express Scripps. Now it's Amazon. And it's Amazon because it's cheaper, it's, they're trying to leverage resources, trying to have a stronger balance sheet. It's a business decision. And every time that happens, we get lower outcomes for healthcare, personally. And every time that happens, we get lower outcomes for healthcare, personally, every time that's happened. And we still haven't figured out how to make sure my daughter can get the insulin when she needs it, the medical devices in time when she needs them. And so that's what I think about, is, is there a way that we can ensure broadly across our community that health outcomes, we have providers in our networks that are going to focus on making sure we have better outcomes for Minnesotans? So that's the lens that I look through for just about everything from a healthcare perspective. And so when I think of this, I don't know if having an out-of-state owner of this hospital potentially lowers the outcomes for the community or not. I just don't know that. However, if we're making a statement around that, I would support it. I would support saying that we care about better healthcare outcomes for our community, and in our community, we have this hospital that is focused on that, and we want to do everything that we can as they're going through some financial challenges to make sure they're developing partnerships that further that. That's, that is kind of where my mind goes. Now, that is a little more, that is raising it up a level, because I actually would include reproductive healthcare in that conversation about better health outcomes for our community. But I felt like this was a little bit too specific for me, but I do support having a resolution. So what do you think about that, Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Member Pierce. I mean, they're losing a lot of money, and that's my concern. If they are losing so much money, they might go away. And then our healthcare outcomes would drop dramatically, because it's kind of the center of our healthcare industry here in Edina. And so if we want to have better healthcare outcomes, I can't, I just don't feel qualified to say that the merger or not the merger would give us better healthcare outcomes. That's, that's above my pay grade, and that's why I would prefer not to say anything, because I agree with you, we do want better healthcare outcomes, we do want to ensure that we continue to have these types of healthcare that are under attack in other parts of the country. It's very important. But I just don't feel qualified that I can make the decision as to which version, merger or no merger, would ensure the better healthcare outcomes. It's above what I'm qualified to opine on.
Other comments? My, if not, my, so I do have a follow-up. Is it, is it that the language of opposing the proposed merger, is that language too strong? In my opinion, I agree with you. I don't know if Sanford Health is going to help us provide better health outcomes or not, and we're not involved in those discussions. But we could have a resolution speaking to that. We want to ensure, as M Health is seeking partnerships, that they're doing that, we're encouraging them to focus on ensuring they're choosing partners that will focus on better health outcomes for the community, or something to that nature.
I would support that.
That wording wasn't great, but that's what's in my head.
I'm thinking it sounds like we are agreeing, or it sounds like we're moving to table this or continue, or are you thinking we could do this now?
Well, I am actually, thank you for the question. I, I think what I am feeling is that we're not aligned on actually what we're opposing. And so if we're in agreement that having a statement that speaks to, we care about M Health as a community partner, and we want to support efforts to solidify their standing in the community. So that's a little different to me than saying we oppose this specific merger. And so we could have something along those lines, is what I am recommending. So that could mean, Member Rissler, that we take a motion to deny this, but then ask staff to come back with a resolution that speaks differently in the way that I framed. Member Jackson?
Thank you. I think that really helps a lot, too, because we are stating our community values, and we don't, aren't second-guessing the economics, and this is very complicated, especially with the Teaching Hospital. Are they going to leave? Are they going to stay? But if we say we value having a hospital in our system, we value good healthcare outcomes for all people in our city, then that can help them in the terms of how they go forward, that their host city has some strong feelings about healthcare, and we want them to know that. That I feel qualified to say.
Okay. Member Agnew?
I'm, I'm just trying to, like, process through my head what would be the result of doing that, because I'm assuming that they're not going into the conversation saying, we don't want better health outcomes for people, but here's this resolution, and Edina wants better health outcomes, so maybe we should think about that. Like, I just don't know that it's actually gonna do anything, and in that case, then, is it better to not do anything?
Thank you. Member Rissler?
I so appreciate what Member Agnew just said, and also being mindful of staff time and everything that is on their plate. And so if we really don't know what we're doing or why we're asking, I think maybe we should acknowledge that.
Okay, thank you. Member Rissler? Manager Neal?
Yes, I'm not, yeah, I would just say I'm not clear on what, where we are at the moment. So I think that the question that's in kind of the public discussion now is really, are you with us or not with us? Are you, do you want this, or do you not want this? That's the way that this discussion's being held in the, in various public bodies, whether it's in the legislature, or it's with the Attorney General, or it's with the Federal Trade Commission, who's also has a role in this process as well. So I think the, they are really, if you want to have an impact on which way this is going, that's probably the issue you're going to have to opine on. And you don't, you're not required to. There's many cities where they, where they, Fairview has operations that are not, they're not expressing opinions on this.
Okay.
Are you aware of any cities that have?
I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
What was the answer to that?
I am not aware of.
Okay.
I don't think that Burnsville has, that was one city we were looking at.
I do think that the city of Minneapolis is considering something similar to this.
Okay.
But they haven't discussed it as a council.
Am I, I don't want to overreact, Manager Neal, to your comments, but I did internalize them as though, while a resolution actually has no bearing on the approval of a merger from any entity, for that matter, regardless of how it was written, I did internalize your feedback, though, is that our opinion is important in the discussion.
I can, I believe it is. And I believe that elected leaders at state and federal levels will believe your opinion is important.
Okay. Then I do think, then, we could take the, we could take the position to not do anything, but we could also spend a little bit more time, perhaps not tonight, but kind of thinking through, then, what kind of resolution could we support as a city?
I'd be happy to take more feedback and input from you. The only risk that you have is that there's, you know, there's like a three-week break now between us, between now and the next council meeting. Something could happen during that time. I don't know how to evaluate that risk, but that's, that's out there.
Okay.
But we could definitely use that time to draft something that would be more comfortable for the group.
Yeah, okay. How does that feel to everyone? So that, the recommendation of, I do feel like, just based on the feedback, that it can be influential to have a position as a city, but then taking a little bit more time to kind of flush out something that we could all support.
So, if I may. So, three things I'd want to see covered. One is antitrust concerns. The second one is reproductive and gender-affirming care. And then the third one is just a sense of the economics, I guess. I guess, no, I know where the Attorney General is, because I think, and the Teaching Hospital, that seems to be his big issue, and I want to preserve, protect that Teaching Hospital. I have very serious concerns about that, which is outside of our jurisdiction, but I'd like to know more information about that, because that would be really important to me.
Member Rissler, Member Agnew, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely am. I think that this is the first time, as like a newbie council member, that I've kind of pursued something like this, and so a lot of it's me figuring it out as we go. And so I think that kind of coming back, working on a little bit more partnering with Manager Neal to work through some of these evolutions is the right next step.
Okay, all right, awesome. And so I, I will, I think for this, we do have to take a vote on this.
Your vote may be to table it indefinitely.
Right, 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 but we do need to take a vote on this. And so I will take a motion to, I'd say, deny the Resolution 202335 and table the, and table the action of drafting a resolution. I don't know that I would say opposing the proposed merger of Sanford. I'd like to try to make that a little bit more generic.
Addressing.
Addressing, or, yeah, in support of M Health, yeah, in support of M Health, perhaps addressing the, can we say, financial challenges or issues? Is that too wordy? So I'll try that again. So, I'll take a motion to deny the current Resolution 202335, opposing the proposed merger of Sanford Health and M Health Fairview, and ask staff to come back with a resolution incorporating additional feedback from the council.
Can do.
Okay. I'll take a, everybody clear on the motion? Someone want to move that forward?
He was so moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
A second, okay. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries with three, four, and one nay. And nay was Member Agnew. Okay, okay. Thank you.
I think that's the first time I've had to recuse myself in all the years I've been working for the people.
I find that so hard to believe.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so I apologize for sitting here. I thought I should have gotten up, and I, all of a sudden, I thought, get out of here. Don't even sit there, even though you're keeping your mouth shut. Go sit somewhere else. So thanks for the, the accommodation and the patience. All right, we are on to the commission correspondence. I don't think we've had anything come in. All right, and then we're on to managers' comments, and Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got three things, relatively short. First, I just want to give you kind of advance notice that we have two important presentations that are queued up for your June 20th meeting. The first is our annual financial audit, so our independent auditors will be here that night to deliver the public report on our 2022 financial performance. The same night, but we'll be doing this virtually, we will have Polco staff deliver the council presentation for our 2023 Quality of Life survey. So two, two big, important sources of information about the city for the council. You'll get the night of June 20th, which then is our last meeting in June, and remember, we don't have a first meeting in July, so we've got about a month in between the last meeting in June and the, and the meeting, our only meeting in July. So that'll be a big meeting that night. The other thing I want to distribute to you is the 2022 year-end review report from the Police Department. There's one of those for each one of you. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Very good. Member Jackson, you want to lead us, lead us off on council comments?
I have council comments tonight.
All right. Member Agnew?
Absolutely. So I think it was last, last week now, I had the opportunity to have kind of a rather informal meeting with members of the Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing. So we've obviously seen them come and kind of share their opinions on different things that are in front of us as a council, but it was just more informal of learning about who their members are and how they kind of come together and work as a group. And so it was just really interesting, and I'm sure that they'd be willing to do that with anyone else if you haven't had the opportunity to just meet with them and kind of understand who they are. I just thought it was really interesting. Learned a lot about, you know, kind of the history of how we got to where we are as a city, and I appreciate it all, their time.
Thank you. I'm going to jump now back to Member Rissler.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd really like to talk about one of the great resources on our city website that people might not know about. And if you Google "Edina maps," you get to a website, and I love maps, but you can look at maps that show deeds and easements, if you want to do that. You can look at the flood map to see if you should have concerns, but there are just a whole host of maps that are out there. And one of the reasons why I'm thinking about that tonight is that I have received comments, and I've had conversations with people who are, you know, thinking about easements. And I think, you know, that part of it is the excitement of the park trail going in and being extended, and I think that's just wonderful. I think part of it's also development that is happening. And so, you know, calling people's attention to that website, I think, is really good. But also... But also, as I'm looking at Fred Richards Park now, and I'm going to be looking back at this, because now I get really caught up in maps, but looking forward to seeing additional detail about the paths that are being created that are really the public way of entering into spaces. So I'm really excited about that. I did get, someone sent me a certificate of title for part of the park trail that is near a site we looked at last time we met. And so I think it's on a lot of people's minds, there's a lot of really engaged people, and that is fantastic. And so I just want to underscore that there's information out there, and it's great when people can look and see exactly where those easements are and know, you know, that, hey, there's a deed restriction here, or, you know, there's a trail here. And I think that adds a whole nother level of thinking about projects as they come to us. So that's my thing for tonight. Thank you. Oh, one other, we've been talking about water a lot. There is a website, if people want to become Adopt a Drain people, you can Adopt a Drain, which is a great program, and they let you name the storm drain that you adopt. I have adopted a drain. So it's, it's a way to really participate in helping keep the water flowing, and if there's a storm drain near you, you can claim it through that site. So it's just Adopt a Drain. And I think it's run through Hamlin. Adoptadrain.org, M-N-A-D-O-P-T-a-drain.org. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Just trying to go in chronological order here, looking back on the, the day after we met before. Oh, excuse me, James. I jumped around too much. I got out of sequence.
When you said chronologically, I thought maybe you'd come back to me.
Yeah. Kind of jumping around, James.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. I just had one kind of brief thing. I, and I mentioned this to Member Agnew. So tonight, I had a, my youngest, Caitlin, had a band concert at Valley View, and it was at six o'clock. And I talk about this a lot when I, when I, when I talk about people, when I talk to people who don't live in Edina about how our community is structured. And I talk about these community schools, neighborhood schools, and the vicinity of City Hall to everything, and it just kind of, everything kind of just works, is, is how I say it. But tonight, I had the concert at six, and Caitlin thought, well, you're gonna miss the concert. And I said, well, no, because you're only five minutes away from where I gotta be at seven o'clock. And so it was just neat to be able to, to go there. I was the only one in a suit and a tie. And so there were a couple of people who said, aren't you the council member? And I said, yes, I'm here to see my daughter. But the concert ended at 6:30. I stayed to the end, commenting everything, and then I get up, drive over here, and I, I was early. I promised I'd be here by 6:45. And I got here early with enough time to actually eat. And so it really is, when we talk about walkability, a lot of the work that we're doing across the city to connect it, like, that's really meaningful work. And when we think about the, oftentimes I do talk about, right, you got to make decisions that are for future, and not have them just be, and not just think about how they impact you today. And you can definitely envision a point in this city where our pedestrian, various pedestrian ways are now connected, and you're able to, to get to services fairly quickly. And it's just a, I think we have a, a very good framework and guideline that has been set forth. And today was just another example of it to me, where I could do what I needed to do pretty easily. And it was just nice. So whatever that, whenever I am able to talk about the connectedness in the city and the vicinity of how things are close, I just think it's awesome. So, nice work to everyone in the city that's been working on that, and all of those that have been sitting up here previously and have been working on, on that as well. And then for sure, our various commissions, but for sure, our present and past planning commissions as well. So, that's it.
Thank you for those observations, all of you. I'm going to stick with that school theme for a second, though, that you made me think of Current Jam, which is coming up.
Oh, my goodness.
Starting tomorrow night, through the 20th.
I have a senior who is in that.
Yeah, go ahead and finish that off.
I, I can't believe I forgot about that. So that, actually, one of the first things when Steph and I moved to Edina, people told us about Current Jam and said, it's like a top-rate concert, right? You got to get tickets to that. And I think I have, I think I have six tickets to Current Jam. I'm going three times. My oldest daughter, Olivia, flew back, because this is Jamie's last time doing it, so she's here, and we're going on the 17th. But it's an awesome, it's an awesome show. So if you're, you're able to go, definitely come and, and give, show your love to the, the choir there, they do an awesome job.
Good. I'll, I'll see you then tomorrow night.
I'll be there.
Because I'm going tomorrow night. My wife and I are going with the superintendent, so we'll see you there tomorrow night. And it is just, it's a high school talent show, for those who don't know anything about it. What's Current Jam? It's a high school talent show. And it alternates between the choruses and individual, and small group performances, and it's just, it's fantastic. I've gone for years and look forward to going tomorrow night. And then last night, we had, we announced the winners, or was there for the, the Edina Reads contest winners, the writing winners, K through 12, did it over at Southview in Drexel's Auditorium. And both prose and poetry, and the kids were fantastic. I mean, some of the things that they've written. And one of the, one of the winners was a young woman who was also here on Sunday, the 7th, and we had Days of Remembrance here in, in City Hall. Her last name is Jaw, and she's an eighth grader. And she and her ninth grade boy had a conversation with Steve Hunnigs, who was one of the guest speakers, and she just did a wonderful job. And so afterwards, I was visiting with her mother on, at the Days of Remembrance event, and I said, she's so poised and handles herself so well. And, and she said, well, it's because of debate. And I said, I thought she was probably in debate, because she was so articulate about everything. And she said, oh, yeah, she's the eighth grader, she's the state champion.
Oh, wow.
And I said, well, you mean the state champion of all the eighth graders in the state? She said, no. She says, he's the state champion in debate as an eighth grader. So there are good days ahead for Edina Public Schools and for her. She was incredible. And then she was a, a great writer, too, and she had written something that was very well done. So, and some of the kids there yesterday were really cute, the kindergartners, first, second, third, you know, that whole grade school crowd was really cute. And the things that they had written, both poetry and prose, were really worthwhile listening to. See, I went over to the Waters on the 10th and made a little presentation, kind of a mini State of the City for about 40 people over there, and I think they enjoyed that, knowing what's going on in their community, that they have chosen to live in. And there were people that had moved here from Rochester and other parts of the state, Fargo, and to be closer to family, and it's a really beautiful facility over there, right behind Fire Station Number One, which is, and I saw the ECMO on the road the other day. I, I don't know where it was heading, but I saw the ECMO heading down the road yesterday. And I mentioned Days of Remembrance, that was a really well-done event, I thought, by our Human Rights and Relations Commission. And then back on the 3rd, the day after we met before, had lunch up in Columbia Heights with some mayors and Congressman Ilhan Omar. And that's always a, a good experience, having a conversation with her. So that's a little bit about what's been going on in my, in my world. Now we, see, next meeting is June 6th, 6th, yeah. So I'll be back from the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting by then, and we've got some things to work on there. So I'll report out on that when I get back. And, and then I'm the alternate on the nominating committee there for the Board of Trustees and the Advisory Board, and then I think the people that are running for organizational offices. So that'll be, if I get to participate, I don't know how I'll participate as the alternate, but it'll be interesting, just to be kind of hanging around the periphery of that activity. So I've been getting all kinds of applications from mayors from all over the country to be on certain boards or the Board of Trustees. So that's it for me. Anything, as a follow-up, anybody think of anything else they wanted to share? All right. So that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Agnew, second by Member Jackson, to adjourn the meeting of the City Council. This, what is it, 13th day of, 16th day of May, 2023. Is there a motion of that effect?
We've got a move and a motion and a second.
And a second.
So we're all set?
You've got a motion and a second, we're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of adjurning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. You stand adjourned.